Good evening and welcome everyone to the Chapua Central School District Board of Education meeting of May 2nd, 2018. The board has been in executive session discussing negotiations, litigation, and I believe that's it. So, if there was anything else-
It was really interesting.
Yeah. So, may I have a motion to reconvene the public session?
Salute.
Of the second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Jeff Nestor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and indivisible in justice and law.
Okay, so tonight we have two presentations. We have the budget hearing and we also have a public library budget presentation. Before that, I'd like to just give a quick recap, just in case not everyone was aware, that last April 18th, we had a special meeting on the issue of security. I just want to recap that the community received an email along with a survey regarding opinions on the possibility of putting out a bond for security updates. The survey was taken, it was presented for the adults of the community, there was a survey for students and a survey for faculty. We had two community forums on the issue, and like I said, we had a special board meeting on April 18th. The board determined at the time that we would take more time, that we would not go out for a bond in June, that that timeline was too quick, and that we needed more time to investigate and research the issue and find alternatives. So, we are going to engage in that process. I just want to say that what we did was, we took the community through our own thinking process and we attempted to, we did create an inclusive and transparent process of seeking feedback. So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Christine to give her final thoughts on that initial process.
Right, so I just want to thank everyone who participated, whether it was in our safety forums, or our online survey, or informal discussion, or our focus groups, to really figure out what is the next steps for us as a district when we're looking at safety and security in our district. I wanted to just clarify before I begin just talking about what our next steps are going to be. There was some commentary about the online survey that I just wanted to clarify for the community, because I received this feedback from three different constituents. So, when we had created this online survey, we had sent it out to our own listserv and we had asked, I had asked Rob Greenstein to send it out to the town, because one of the indicators on that survey was whether or not parents had kids currently attending our school district or future students in our district. And the reason I wanted to know that is because I wanted to make sure that we were addressing the part of our population that didn't have school-aged children. So, I think for some reason, people took their own interpretation of why that question was there, but the question was there because I wanted to make sure we were reaching out to those families who maybe don't traditionally get our information because they don't have current students enrolled K through 12. So, it was through that feedback that I was able to talk with David Hayes about connecting with the town to make sure we pushed it out to more families, because initially, that number wasn't large enough for us. So, I just felt it was important to put the right information out there, because people were making leaps about why we did what we did, or why we asked a particular question in a certain way, but it actually served us very well, because it was a signal to me that I needed to push out the survey in a different, in a different, in a different way. So, again, with all the feedback that we gathered, we saw the same themes across every group that we spoke with. So, what we decided to do was, decided for our elementary, middle schools, that we would review the Alteris audits of those five buildings, and then if we were going to move forward with addressing the main entrances, and when we say the main entrances, we're including the disability ramp at Bell, that we would do so, if we decided we were going to do that, we would do it without asking the community for bond support. But we would, we would make that decision at the time that the audits were presented to the Board of Education. That way, if we missed something, we had that information as well that needed to be addressed. And then for Greeley, which is much more complicated, we have a two-part process. The first process was to have a team make some short-term recommendations to be put in place for September, and John Chow and Robert Rhodes will co-chair that team, and we're lucky that Jane and Jeff were able to be a part of that, and we have different members of the Greeley community who will also work with them to make some recommendations to the Board of Education of our next steps at the June 13th meeting. And then we'll have a, another group, or maybe members from the same group, do a longer study of Greeley and come back together in January after we really analyze how the Whole Foods complex will be impacting us in terms of our traffic, in terms of our students using that space. It just will give us more information to make a better decision on how we're going to move forward. So, I think that the process served us well, and I think we're making, the steps that we're taking moving forward are reflective of the feedback that we received from our different community members. So, I'm comfortable with how we're going to address this.
Okay. Is there anything else anyone wanted to add about security before I go into the rest of the report? No, that's it. Okay, thank you Christine.
Okay. So, before we begin with the, our library and our budget hearing, I'd like to make a few comments. First, I wanted to share with the community that I'm hopeful that at our next meeting, we'll be able to recommend our two elementary principals on May 23rd, and I'm also hoping that we'll be able to recommend to the board our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Leadership. I'd like to personally thank the foundation for a wonderful event last Friday. The generosity of our community was demonstrated all evening, and the efforts of this small group that really made this happen for us really can support innovation on both the macro and micro level, and we really appreciate how they support us and our teachers and our students. I wanted to talk a little bit about, some of the feedback we received about how can we reach out to the larger community of students, of families that don't have students here. I've been thinking a lot about that, and even though I feel like the survey was pretty representative, I think we have to talk about this summer, is there a way that we can encourage our population who's not on our listserv to be a part of that? So, we're thinking about, does it make sense to set a postcard out? How can we get, how can we engage these, these community members to get them to subscribe to our service? So, we're going to be talking about that, but part of, you know, part of the, since I arrived here, and I know it's been a major goal for this Board of Education and for our administration to increase our community outreach efforts. On the agenda tonight, you'll see, I thought, I had waited because I knew I had this opportunity to, because in the budget, there was a .4 position for us to add to support the district office, but I wanted to be here for a few months to figure out exactly what that should look like. So, you'll see on the agenda tonight, we have someone, we're creating the position, and what I envision this person doing is, first is, I'd like them to help support the PTA and actually organize the calendar for the district, and not have our parents have to take on that effort, because I really feel like that's our responsibility. But I also see this person, now that we're leveraging social media more, being our person that does a lot of that community outreach, and supporting the district office specifically, myself, the Board of Education, in our community outreach efforts, and then also helping support Greeley, because the most notices need to be generated from that building out to the community. I want to also mention on the agenda tonight, we are progressing forward with our Twin Oaks and Sports Boosters partnership, as we discussed in a previous meeting where you gave approval for sports boosters to apply for a grant on the district's behalf. And in this agenda, we are asking you to approve KD&amp;G to design the space that we are requesting be reconceptualized by, by our partnership with these two organizations for our students, and part of what we're thinking will require New York State approval, so we need KD&amp;G's support in that. And then finally, I would like to, if possible, move Laura Lynn's appointment up to now on the agenda, and I just want to take a moment to thank Laura Lynn. She's been a teacher in our district for a number of years, and we had a situation about two years ago where we needed additional support in the administrative offices of Greeley, because we had a, we had a leave replacement position, and Laura Lynn stepped into that role for us, and the entire team at the high school, including the faculty, have supported her appointment to approbationary assignment in that same role. And I would just speak on behalf of Robert tonight, where I can say that we had a very competitive process in place, which Lynn was a part of, but she was head and shoulders above every other candidate, and we're so lucky that we're able to benefit from her, not only her, her experience, now that she'd be three years in this administrative role, but her partnerships with people as both a faculty member here, previous to her experience as assistant principal. So, we look forward to the good work that she'll do in the official capacity now as an assistant principal here in our district. So, I'd like, if possible, if you could consider appointing her now, so we could move forward with that recommendation.
Okay, so this, we would take this out of item 4.1, and, okay. May I have a motion to approve the appointment of Laura Lynn Stewart?
I, no. I think we have to approve her resignation first.
Well-
Do we?
Nope. You would approve her appointment, and then you can do her resignation as a-
Thirty seconds, we're in a panic mode.
No, no, I just thought procedurally should resign, then get approved. Because I have no problem with approving.
Don't worry.
Point to Jamie and that resignation.
No, I want to just make sure you don't-
We would owe her double time for the last two minutes.
We would, we would do her appointment under the superintendent's report and her resignation under normal business.
I move we make that appointment.
I second that, since I don't want to, I just want to make sure we weren't in trouble.
Laura Lynn, thank you. I want to thank you for all the work you've done prior to your, what you've done in the administrative office as a teacher, and what you've done on the administrative side thus far. So, we look forward to having you be formally in this new, in this new position.
Yes, just one thing on the agenda, I should say, in the tenure area of Assistant Principal for Horace Greeley High School. It just says Assistant Principal, so I'd like us to amend that to say Assistant Principal for Horace Greeley High School.
Okay. I'm just finding it.
It's under 4.1, right above 4.2.
Oh, there it is, okay. All right, so should we have to technically redo that motion?
Yeah.
Yep.
I move as amended. I withdraw my original motion.
I withdraw my second.
All in favor of withdrawing the motion, do you say aye?
Aye.
I move as amended.
I second as amended.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Laura Lynn.
Congratulations.
Now, I know Laura Lynn needs to get up early tomorrow, because she is the high school assistant principal.
Right, that's why we, that's why I want to get up.
Want to honor your work. Okay, so-
Congratulations.
You know Christine, I wanted to mention about reaching out to the larger community to get them to come on to our website and to sign up for the emails. We do have to send something out to the community by mail, to send budget information very soon, so maybe in that budget mailing, that might be a good opportunity.
I don't know if we're allowed to.
They're not already today.
Oh, I see.
Can I ask a question? When people sign up for the lists, there's a lot, we get a lot of emails, and I think one of the reasons that people, when their kids graduate, deliberately take themselves off, is it's too much. So, is there a way that we can subset information that is, so that people could only sign up for the stuff that-
Yeah, the graduate list is different.
I mean, you really don't want a lot of that stuff.
I agree.
If your kids are gone.
No, they wouldn't, because they would, it would be school-related, so this would be district-related.
Right, but even that, there's still a lot of stuff in there, that like, school closings and things that may not be relevant to someone who really just wants to know about budgetary issues and things like that.
Yes.
Okay. I think that would help, I think people would like that.
Yes. So, I'll share with you, as we get towards the summer, how we're going to leverage this communication effort.
Cool.
Okay, so Pam, are you ready?
Is the communication coming?
I'm ready.
Okay, just want to introduce Pam Thornton, our library, Chapua Library Director, and I also want to note that we have a Chapua, Chapua Library Board Member here as well, Ronnie Diamondstein. Welcome, both Pam and Ronnie.
Thank you, Vicki. Hello, everybody, welcome. John gave me his pointer, I'm going to try to work this pointer. Okay, we have a budget that was passed by my library board in March. We are requesting, I'm going to try this, John. Wait. Oh, this might not work. Pointer's not working. Oh, wait. Three million, one hundred fifty-three thousand and forty-two dollars. What we're doing, though, is the tax levy that's available is over a hundred thousand dollars. We're not using the entire tax levy. We're going to use fifty-eight thousand of the available tax levy to us, and we've also taken thirty-seven thousand of our fund balance to supplement our needs for our budget. The increases are in staffing and benefits. Basically, we're all getting some raises for our staff, and we also created another part-time, very part-time position for a benefits person. When my business manager retired over a year ago, we didn't fill that position, but we need a part-time personnel to do the benefits, and the health increase costs went up. Those are the ones that are causing the 4.1% increase in health and staff. Library materials are going down about 10%. It actually reflects what's happening in the library world. People are not taking out as much physical material. We are still using our eBooks, but also because we're going to be under construction. From September of this year till June of next year, there's going to be less room to buy as many copies as we would normally buy in a year. We're going to have to downsize a little bit, we're going to, you know, stage the construction. Children's is going to move in the theater, they might not buy as many copies. We'll still buy books, we'll still buy material, it's just the number of copies will be down. And then operating expenses, they'll, they're pretty much the same, because we still will have heating, physical maintenance, snow removal, all that, that's been part of the operating expenses of the building. Office supplies, professional fees, went down, and our technology is still going to be in place. We're still going to keep as many resources and maintain as many services as possible during the construction phase. And here's the tax levy formula, based on the allowable growth factor and the prior tax levy, we were eligible for a hundred and one thousand, ten dollars. As I said, we only are using fifty-eight thousand of that. And, next page. The estimated tax analysis for Newcastle, the increase is going to be 1.73%, and for Mount Pleasant, it's 5.63% for this coming fiscal year. And we do have one position open, a five-year position on our board, we have one candidate running. So, any questions? Our parking lot-
Yeah, parking lot, is it open yet?
It's going to be open in about two weeks. I wish it was open now.
I'm thrilled, I know.
I'm so excited. It's been, it's taken about 10 years with all the process and approvals, but it'll be 24 more spaces around the back and the side of the building. Which we only have 47 right now, so it actually, 24 will double, basically, half that. Yeah, so we're excited about that, but it'll be another, about another two weeks. All we have left is the striping and the planting and the fencing, and we're done. Oh, thank you. Everybody sucks. You know, I'm going to actually be the first car through there. I'll have the ribbon streaming from the back of my car.
I understand, somebody actually tried to go through there.
Someone actually did, and almost ran over the workman back there. And then they realized that there was the big tractor and the construction, and they turned around and flipped out. Yeah, so, yeah, you can't, once the barriers are there, they're just, it's crazy, so. Are there any questions?
Thank you. No, Pam, you've done, I just want to say you've done, as usual, a wonderful job with the budget and with the library, and the budget is always really clear, and everyone loves the library.
We're so happy with what we do.
Everyone wants the library, and I don't think you should ever worry about having your budget voted down, but I just want to thank you for doing a wonderful job.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you. And we love, you know, we love serving our people, so this is great.
But I do have a non-budget related question, and I think we had some, some communication about it, and so, you know what I'm going to ask about. So, we received a query from, what I now realize is really from a community member, but who happens to be a library board member, so that's why this brings, brings this to mind. So, we were asked whether or not we would livestream school board meetings, and that's always been a perennial question, and we've thought about it, it was something that the school board considered some years ago, I think before I was on the board, but we're asked that periodically. But I guess because the question came from a library board member, and I recognize now that this was not a question from the library board, but it still raises the question for me, it's made me realize that, you know, library board meetings are not videotaped at all.
That's right.
And, you know, if you compare the library board to the school board, I mean, we both go before, you know, on candidate's night, board members present their views, their vision of a library, we present our vision for the school district, we get elected in the same election, our budgets are voted on by the public, it's all taxpayer money. And so, and I, and I think, like I said, people really appreciate the library and are interested in what's going on, and, you know, people are always talking about issues of transparency, and so I just, I just wondered whether you have considered videotaping the meetings. I know that we've helped the town videotape some of their meetings at times, you know, we could certainly be helpful in, in that regard.
NCC, the video people are in the building, so I think they could do it.
They're in the library.
I can just add that I was one of the few people that's actually attended a library board meeting as a public. I was actually surprised that it wasn't recorded. I mean, you kind of get used to it, you kind of forget about them after a while, and you say, I'm perfect examples, you say what comes to mind, and don't necessarily worry about it. So, it's really nothing to be afraid of, I guess is my point.
But maybe this is not really a question for you Pam, because you're the director, so this is really for the board, and, you know, Ronnie, I know that Ronnie is here and may want to speak to this issue, and you're welcome to speak, Ronnie.
Take the mic. Because we record these things, we need you to use the microphone.
Right.
So, is this on? Can you hear me? Okay, so first, I wanted to say, I wanted to thank, who do I look at?
First of all, I want to say thank you for coming. I don't think we've, it occurs to me, I don't think we've had a library board member come for the library budget presentation.
One in 11 years. One other, one other in 11 years.
One other in 11 years, so I, you're all, you're welcome to come at any board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
No, thank you, and I'm honored to be here, I was, I felt it was important for me as a board member to be here to support Pam for the hard work that she does for the community and for the, how well she put the budget together. It was, made the board's life pretty easy just to, because she's got it all down pat, so I appreciate that, and I congratulate Pam for, for what she does. And since I am, the board has not taken a position on videotaping, I will, I can speak as an individual, as board member, so just so we're clear on that. I'm entitled to do that, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. But the videotaping has come up, it actually, as Jeff mentioned, the NCCMC, and I'm on the board of that, so just for full disclosure, is located, our main office is, and location is at the Chapua Library in the theater. And the subject did come up, actually, in January, at our January board meeting, and I'll give you a little history of how it did come up. Our board spends $2,400 a year to pay a scribe to take minutes of board meetings. I have objected to that, that's my, I feel that we have a board secretary and that person can take the minutes. So, in, but that's, the board has, they had decided to do that, and that's how the board was functioning. However, in January, I was elected to the position of the secretary, and coincidentally, in December, the scribe that we had, had resigned. So, I offered to save taxpayer dollars of $2,400 a year and to take the minutes, and I offered to record them for accuracy, and the board did not, they didn't approve of that. So, I suggested that perhaps a good compromise would be to have the board meetings videotaped, and then we could, you know, I, as a secretary, I could take minutes and go back and look at them for accuracy. So, they, at that January meeting, the board did again vote to keep the scribe, and we didn't have any real definitive discussion on videotaping. It came up again at the February meeting, and the subject was tabled until a future meeting, and at this time, we're going to have a discussion of it on the July meeting, which is July 17th, Tuesday, July 17th. So, I personally feel there are a lot of benefits to the community for videotaping, transparency for one, that you mentioned Vicki, and accuracy. And for the library board, we could use the funds we've already budgeted for a scribe towards the, towards videotaping, and then the secretary could assume the responsibilities of taking minutes. And since minutes are basically action items, it's not, you know, an overwhelming job, and it's for a secretary to do. And the, the main benefit really is for the community, so I feel that it gives the community a window into our decision-making process. They can hear how we decide the things that we decide, just like we have the opportunity when we watch your meetings to do that. And it also makes it more convenient for people, they may not be able to come to a meeting, Tuesday nights are also town board meetings, so you can't, and you have children and other responsibilities, so it really makes it more convenient for the public. So, I would invite anyone to share their thoughts with, with the library board. I'm always wanting to hear what the community has to say. You can contact us, we have an email, chaboard@wlsmail.org, all our emails are on there, I'm rdiamondstein@wlsmail.org, my phone number's on the, on the website, library website, and call me up, I'm happy to talk about it. Anyone who wants to come to the meeting, any community members that want to come to the meeting in July to hear what we have to say and, and comment, you're welcome. So, I'm interested in what the community thinks, and I'm also interested to hear what you have to say. And like I said, this is my own personal opinion, our board has not voted on it, so, you know, it's open to discussion.
Well, thank you Ronnie, and thank you to you and your board for entertaining the notion of videotaping library board meetings, I think would be very interesting for the community, for all the reasons that, that you stated. Does anyone want to, like, can you comment?
I had two comments. One, I think, I would make a trade. We put our phone numbers on our website and you record your meetings. I don't see any reason not to record them, I just-
I don't see, I mean, I think the comment, the initial comment, I mean, is on live, live feed. I think we had that, I think Vicki said before, she was on the board, it's, we've had that conversation at least twice when I've been on the board in the last five years, and I think we've decided that there were some advantages and some disadvantages, and we have, as a group, decided not to do live board meetings on live feed. When we're here on Wednesday, or, these are published, you can see them online, so, I'm not sure live, library board meetings or school board meetings are-
I'm sorry. Do you want me to start all over? You got the, you got the gist of it? So, sorry, I was just sort of saying back. I'm not sure that live feed board meetings are, I don't know.
Right, I mean, I guess the livestream is a question of timing. You know, it's not a question, we, we do publicize our meetings, they're videotaped and published.
And we've had a lot of discussion on this already, so.
Right, right.
And they are, I mean, we, I mean, I'm not sure how long it takes to get the video out, but we do videotape them. And as you know, anybody can call any of us at any time, whether our number's on the school board website or not. school board website or not, but we're accessible, so.
Okay.
And I mean, I'd be curious as to why anybody would object to it. It seems like it's taxpayer money and taxpayers should have access.
I agree with you.
Okay, sorry. So, I think it's a, I think it's a, an important decision. And I would hope that the board members who are elected by this community feel that responsibility to provide that level of transparency today to the community. But thank you for continuing to bring it up.
Thank you for the explanation. Thank you, Pam, for everything you've done. Really appreciate it.
John, you've got competition. She explained the tax cap really smoothly and easily.
We only have four slides.
We see, though, we can do a fact.
Okay, we see what we can do. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Pam. Okay, so, tonight is our budget hearing. We presented the budget multiple times to the Board of Education, so we'll go through this as efficiently as possible. Okay, so, again, we allow our strategic questions to guide our budgeting process. Our operating standards focus on our continued tradition of excellence, having a safe and supportive community for our students, continual improvement, innovation, efficiencies, high-quality faculty, staff, and administrators, optimizing communication, small class sizes, research-based professional development, our teaming approaches in the middle school, course offerings that are diverse in nature, cross-disciplinary experiences, excellent facilities, efficient school offices, and making sure we reduce that overtime pay. So, our budget, our levy is 2.5%, with a $2,988,300 increase budget to budget. This next slide just shows our percentage increase over time from 2010-11. John, do you want to just go over expenditures?
Yes. Overall, the expenditures increase is 2.5%. And we talked about why the employee benefits is high, the increase is 4.5. I'm just going to highlight the large ones. And then the debt service is 14.2% because we borrow $16 million. And technology, we're pushing technology next year, so you see the increase there. And the revenue, obviously, the same part, same thing is that the real property taxes is still represent the majority of our revenue. And the state aid only went up ever so slightly. And we're using the additional fund balance really to make sure our borrowing, the debt service, doesn't have an impact on the tax levy, that, to fulfill our commitment to the community. And here's the tax, tax cap calculations. You know, I'm going to say the same thing as Pam. We can go up to 5.3, 3.59%, but we're going up 2.13%. I think this is a point that Warren probably wants to comment. I know he has been tracking, because every week we get the report from the school board associations. I think the last time I counted out of the, I think so far only 38 school districts reported, probably. 20 of them are going up directly to the top, because they really don't want any money left on the table. Whereas, you know, we're not going to the top. We are asking for the money that is appropriate, is needed to keep our school.
And I know that that doesn't hurt us, but it limits what we can do next year, but that's not our philosophy.
That's right. Because, you know, our commitment is really, we ask for the money that we need and to sustain this school district. And we need to go over the tax cap, we'll go over the tax cap. Just for your information, so far, just one school district is going over the tax cap. Is my marionette?
John, yeah. This is a good thing. Even though our budget is going up by over 2%, I think a half a percent of that is coming from, not, I wouldn't say one time, but from the bond, additional bond payments we have to make though, right? It's not really from an operating standpoint.
No, no, no. The tax cap is actually because of, you're talking about, you're talking about the budget.
Yes.
The budget increase, 0.5% is because of the debt service.
Okay.
But that, but I just want to make sure.
And that's being offset, and that's being offset by the increased authorization to spend reserves.
Right, right. And therefore, there's no impact on the tax levy.
Right. So, if you take out both of those things, then how much is our budget, what percentage is our budget going up? Less than 2%?
Without the debt service, it would have been 1.69%.
That's, I think that's the important.
Right. So, basically, just go back, that 0.5% doesn't have any impact on the tax levy.
Right.
And that's the important part.
But when you make the comparison to these other districts that are going all the way up to a much higher than 2% tax cap that they're allowed, we look even more favorable because, you know, X that weren't, extraordinary item, we're actually holding even lower.
Right.
And we're holding consistent with the rest of those little bars on the previous slide.
Right.
Well, it's also important to note that we did anticipate the use of the fund balance in this way, so we're not just doing it because there's a problem. We anticipated, you know, that was part of the plan.
Right, absolutely.
So, that's not a surprise.
And, you know, we're going to go out to borrow again, because we need to borrow the balance. And so, we'll go through the Moody's rating again. I'm pretty sure we'll maintain our AAA. And because I think they definitely look at the reserves, the fund balance, and that was one of the problems one of our neighboring districts running to a couple of years ago.
So, just in terms of our additions and our reductions, at the elementary and middle schools, it's really all based on enrollment. It's really where we're adding some additional support staff. We have a .8 social worker, so we're increasing that to a full-time person. And then we're adding some coaches based on enrollment in our sports programs. And then we are committing to our increase in our security guards and our contract. So, we put this in the budget for next year.
Can I just say one thing about that, too? We had a lot of comments that, hey, why are you increasing coaches and cutting teachers? The cost of a coach is one-tenth of the cost of a teacher at best, at most. And I want to be clear that you can't just make that equivalence.
Right, and we are, our reductions in our teaching is based on our enrollment, so we're not reducing program, we're just reorganizing ourselves based on where the kids are going to be next year.
Jeff, I'm so glad you brought that up, because one of the, perhaps that was the one that you attended, one of the budget meetings, we were at Bell in the morning. There was one person actually approached us, because that was a time where, you know, that everyone was arguing about, there was orchard class size. So, the question came up was, actually, he asked me in private, not publicly. So, why can't you just reduce one of the coaching positions and to, I said, you know, the five coaches, probably all their stipends add together is probably one-tenth of a teacher's annual salary. Because this is really just a stipend position.
Right, there's no, there's no benefits to it. And even if you're at the maximum level of steps and lanes and whatever, you're still, quite frankly, underpaid for that role versus where you can get in the private sector.
I also think that, I think it's important to note, and everybody wants what's best for their children at a particular age that they are. And they, obviously, when you're in elementary school, you're concerned about, you know, certain issues and different ones when you get to the high school. But I just hope that all the communities, the community members take a broad enough view to realize that there are reasons why we need additional coaches at the high school as much as we need perhaps another teacher at an elementary school. And there are safety issues, there's enrollment issues. And so, I just want everyone to understand that we are looking at all of those factors and that it's not always apples to apples. There are different, there are different needs.
I would go farther than say a coach versus a teacher. I would say that I think the administration here does a great job in balancing the needs of the district. I mean, we look at all of the classes, all the schools, all of the resources, not just a specific one. And I know that, you know, that Christine fixed the, I lost the microphone for Haley, fixed the, the class size, and I think West Orchard third grade this year early, and maybe we can look at doing that differently next year. But again, it's not just the third grade at West Orchard or the second grade at Roaringbrook, it's the entire district that we have to, that we have to worry about. Because we have 4,000, almost 4,000 students that rely on us.
Thank you. Here's the tax analysis. We have gone over this a few times already, so I'll just go very quickly. So, our estimated, I just want to stress, is that these are the estimated numbers. For Newcastle is 1.92% increase and for Mount Pleasant is 5.83%. And the discrepancy is purely because of the equalization rates. Here are the most, eight most recent budgets, this is the summary here. The average budget increase for the last seven increases was 1.42% and the tax levy is 1.45%. And again, the tax rates are estimated numbers. And this is the budget notice. And our newsletter already went out, so the taxpayers, residents should be getting a very, I know some of you already received it. And the budget notice is in there and is required. And we have to state that if we go into the contingency budget, what does it look like? And we have another proposition is also listed, which we'll go over later. And there's the property tax report card that we already reported to the state that is required.
In terms of our budget highlights, I just, instead of going over the slide, I just would like to show you in our newsletter that we sent home to the community, not only did we articulate the finances, but we talked about some of the good work that's happening across the district, just to highlight to our community some of the academic programs that they're supporting through their, through their taxes for our kids. So, we just thought it would be a nice window into the different subject areas and some of the good work that's happening across the district.
And that's also a very good way to communicate with the non-parents. They don't have any children because they don't come to the school. So, just give us the opportunity to show, show them what's happening.
You know, I'm curious about the feedback we get about this, too, because it's typically, based on the ones that I've seen, it's typically all been numbers and now we have some additional commentary in it. So, if people like this, then we can continue with this additional section moving forward. Now, we've had commentary in the past, for instance, we've always had the message from the board and some other commentary, but this is, this is much more in-depth and informative, pictures for good. It gives a really good feeling for what's going on in the schools. We also thought it was important to put a construction update, because that was some of the comments that we heard during public comments about how we were using that money, where, what's the timeline? So, we put some information in the newsletter as well.
Did Judy approve of it?
I didn't show it to her, but I hope she sees it and likes that piece. Do you want to talk about the capital reserve, John?
Right, right there. We're going to talk about the capital reserves. And so, on the ballot, there's another proposition is to establish the capital reserve. And this is really for the future. We are not going to, this is not, is not going to increase the tax levy. It is set up a reserve for the future if we have any capital needs. At that time, it is, you know, we have funds in our reserve, we can use those funds rather than going to the public to ask for another bond.
And this would help to keep the tax levy down.
Actually, in the long run, yes.
Right, so, for anyone thinking that this is not a good thing, it really would help to smooth that process out.
Absolutely.
Well, I just want to say this is a really well-balanced budget. I just want to echo what some of us said here, Warren, too, that we do think about all the areas of programming, including extracurriculars such as athletics. I know that sometimes people think it's not that important, but when you think about a child's entire experience in school, it's much more than academics. A really well-rounded education contains a lot more than core classes. So, sometimes there are kids who come to school because of their extracurriculars and it really impacts a lot of the social emotional health issues that we try to work on with students. And it's really part of a well-rounded education, whether it be athletics, music, or theater, or clubs. So, all of this is really important to a school district. So, I just want to thank the administration again, and I want to thank not just the central staff, but the building administrators for working on the budget, and all the teachers, you know, faculty and staff, because it's a whole, it's a whole team effort.
Absolutely.
You know, from the custodians to the office workers, everyone tries to really establish, starting from zero, what they really need and what the community needs, what the students need, and what keeps our school district functioning. So, I want to just thank everyone once again and give the opportunity.
I just want to remind everyone that is, if you haven't, the public, if you haven't registered to vote, it's not too late. You can go see the district clerk. Up until the 10th, during the office hours, you can register to vote. And our budget vote is Tuesday, May 15.
So, does the board have anything to add? This is the budget hearing. We've already adopted the budget, but the budget hearing is a requirement? Yeah, and it's an oddity that there was a budget hearing after the budget adoption. And we always talk about that, but that is an oddity in state law. It's a silly, you know.
Well, I'm an oddity.
I just have a big thank you to John and staff and Christine and everyone else, but John does an unbelievable amount of work, so.
Absolutely.
Big amount of thank you.
But thank you.
And I'd also like to thank David Hayes for putting together our highlights.
Yes, oh, thank you, David.
Right.
I just want to say one thing.
David, who?
We talk about, you know, the increase in the budget because of bond projects and on some level, I feel like sometimes we're apologizing for that. The amazing things that are coming online in this district as a result of these bond projects, we've been talking all year about technology and innovation and project-based learning and meeting after meeting, we're stunned with the staff development and learning and preparation for these spaces. It's a good thing. It's a really amazing, powerful thing that's pushing this district forward, that's going to impact students for generations. And we're staying ahead of the forefront and I feel like what we're getting for this is worth every penny. It's really, really worthwhile for all students, the libraries, you know, everybody in this community is getting, is benefiting from this. And that's, you know, from the elementary schools all the way to the high schools, athletics, library, it's just, it's really, we shouldn't be feeling bad about it, because it's the kids and the students and the community that's really going to benefit.
It's actually, I mean, it's an investment in education, which we are supposed to be doing. I remember when we were having a presentation from the bond, we had a bond consultant come in and compare our debt service, he made a certain comparison of our debt service to that of other districts.
Probably the lowest.
And determined that we are the lowest in terms of investment in bonds and debt service as compared to other districts. On the one hand, you could say, oh, that's really good. On the other hand, you can, you know, if you view a company and you see that their investment in R and R is really low, that's a bad thing, because you do want to invest in research and development and progress. And so, that's what this represents. So, to a certain extent, I do become disturbed when people suggest that we go back and we sort of relitigate the whole issue, put a proposition before the community to, you know, reallocate these resources. I mean, we are progressing in education and that's what this district is really all about. So, yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
I would like to add, this is my 11th year doing this. I'm never amazed, never surprised by how much work goes into it, because it is an incredible process, a zero-budget process. I think that, sort of elaborating on what Allison said, what I've come to learn over these 11 years is that if you want to learn where the priorities of the district are, it's right here in the budget. That is where, this budget, no matter what, and really, the board's main goal is the budget, but this is the priorities of the district. Where we allocate our money tells you where, you know, what we think is important. So, whether it's the bond, as Vicki pointed out, or whether it's just operating expenses or contracts or where, it tells you what we think is important. or contracts or where, it tells you what we think is important.
Okay, so seeing that this, oh, I'm sorry, any, any other comments? Anything else from the administration? So seeing that this is a budget hearing, I would suggest bring up the public comment period and do the committee reports afterwards to see, to hear from the public, to see if there are any comments about the budget or any other issue. So please come up and identify yourselves if any, if anyone has anything to say. Nope?
One more time.
Okay.
Don't fight, don't fight, don't fight.
Well, okay, seeing that there are no public comments, we will then move on to committee Policy committee, we should have some policies next, at the ne, next meeting.
We will have, we will have two.
We will have a couple of policies that we're working on. Anything from facilities?
Stories we have not met, or we have met, but we have nothing to really report. We have a-
I, I do have a couple of things to report. Last Friday, we got a formal approval from, from the state for the Greeley project, so we got-
That was after our meeting though, John.
Yes.
Yes.
Be clear.
So we, we have approval for, for all the projects now. And also, our bid opening, openings will be next week. May 8th is the field, sea field, and May 9th is the rest of the projects. So the rest of the projects, I'm talking about all the projects in Greeley other than the two fields and also excluding the auditorium, but also include the public library. So, next week, we have two openings.
Okay, that's great news. Okay.
And the communications committee has not met?
No. We have not.
Nope.
Audit?
Audit's coming. We have an audit meeting in a couple of weeks.
We have wellness committee, which, you know, John-
Well, we have a wellness committee meeting and we reviewed the bid specs because this is the year we have to go out and bid.
Big specs for the food service contract.
And Jane is sitting on that committee. And we'll probably have the bid out next, next week or the week after.
Right, okay. Okay, all right, thank you. So we'll move on to the business portion, right? Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes? Accept the minutes, thank you. From items 3.1 through 3.3, these would be the minutes of March 28th, April 11th, and April 24th.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay, any, any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 I was not at 3.3, so, but I read it, so we're okay. Because all we're doing is a prayer at night.
Okay, we're just accepting them, so it's okay. All right. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve, well, recommended action from the superintendent?
I recommend 4.1 instructional as amended.
I will move item 4.1 as amended. May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
Item 4.2?
I'll second item 4.2.
Comments, questions?
Yes. I think Dr. Ackerman began explaining, he resolved the Board of Education, he like creates a point four full-time position for public, public relations assistant position. Now, as I understand this, based on what you said before, I'm not sure how we can do any, that person's going to do all the work that they were supposed to be doing in point four time, two days a week. But having said that, I'm not really sure, I ask, is this a civil service position? Is it a, and why public relations? Is that the appropriate title for what this person's doing?
Right, so it is, it is a civil service position. Public relations is the best title to fit what we, we need this person to do. Because it's point four, we don't have to go off the civil service list. So we get more latitude in who we want to hire for this position.
And what if we, and if we realize after six months that we need the person to go from point four to-
1.0?
Yeah.
Then, we do, we would have to go off the list.
We do.
Mm-hmm. So what we could do is hopefully if someone, if we do decide we need to increase it, then we can encourage that person to take the test.
Wait, can you explain again what this person's doing? Social media? What was, I thought David, we just complimented before.
We need support in the office to help, we just want to just be, make sure I'm clear with what I said, because I, we need help organizing the calendar, supporting our social media and community outreach, supporting the district office in our communication efforts. And then, this person will also have some responsibility in helping Greeley with their communications. And we've increased, we've increased our communication methods, but we haven't increased the number of people that we ask to help us do this, so we want to be, be sure that, you know, we're-
If we have greater avenues of communication, we need them to be managed properly.
Right. I mean, we are, you know, and we probably can be, I'm sorry.
I think also, I just want to add, add one thing is that Christine, earlier, when, when Christine presented, she mentioned that, you know, we already have this in the budget. You know, just really that, that instead of doing the office support is this one, where, so this is not going to increase the budget.
I'm leveraging the office support in a different way, based on the needs that we've identified through the transitional process about us having more outreach to the community. So I just, I waited to fill it because I wanted to make sure, based on my transition plan, that I knew exactly what that position should look like since it was under my purview.
And since it's not a civil service position, how do we fill this? Do we have people in mind? Is it some criteria?
We're an advertiser.
We're looking for a good writer, we're looking for-
So, uh-
It is, it is a civil service position, it's just that we don't have to go through the list.
Can I whip? We just-
It is a civil service position.
We, right.
Just that we don't have to, you-
We, we have to use the list, that's right. But we, we would put an ad in the paper?
Yes, I'm probably on a loss.
How do you pronounce it? Always?
Uh, that's our, it's one of our online systems that we can use for hiring. Putnam, Northern Westchester BOCs. Okay?
Okay. Does that answer all the questions? Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Okay, may I have a motion to approve CSE summaries, items 5.1 and 5.2? These would be CSE summaries, both for the 17, for the 17, 18 school year, reported to the board today, May 2nd, and summaries for the 2018, 19 school year, reported to the board today, May 2nd.
I move item 5.1 and 5.2.
I will second. Any questions? No, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion to provide item 5.3, the Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs 2018, 19 contract of services in the amount of $1.3 million.
I move item 5.3.
I second. Any questions? Any comments?
Jeffrey, you're our BOCs advocate.
This is, this is an interesting part of that in that this isn't really part of it. This is a services contract for things, like buying, collective buying that we use and stuff like that.
These are things that we can actually proactively contract for.
This is right, this is, this is something that's variable that we decide on, not something that's imposed upon us, upon some inappropriate taxation.
You mean like a couple of years ago when they wanted us to invest $1.8 million to fix the roof?
Eighteen million dollars.
No, that, that was different.
Our, I think our-
Asher was one of them.
Right.
Yeah, just like that, but this is not that. This is actually if you wanted to buy paper three days, if you wanted to, we use security services, that kind of thing. Right, John?
Okay. So all, any other comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 May I have a motion to approve item 5.4, which is an agreement with K G and D Architects in the amount of $9,700 to design a handicap accessible ramp at seven bridges to the upper athletic field.
I move item 5.4.
I second.
Any questions, comments? Right, it's necessary, good thing. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to provide item 5.5? This is an increase to the budget in the amount of $142,000 for transfer to the special aid fund for the summer special ed program.
I move item 5.4.
That is not being paid by New York State.
We had to write that off, yes.
That's right.
For 2012, yes. I second.
I have a question.
Yes.
What happens if three of us vote no?
Yep.
Then we have a hole there, then we just keep it on the books. And we can continue to keep it on the books, but it will be cited by our external auditor.
Okay.
Because we've been told to get it off the books, correct?
But because it's a proper way to, the reason is because-
That's the procedure at, during, after a certain period of time.
But, but once you know a collectible is no longer a collectible-
Able to be collected.
Then you need to write it off.
We do this every year, John.
We do.
And I think that the state is, the, the government of the state is touting how fiscally responsible they are, yet their, their fiscal responsibility is held in the back of the school districts and the children of our state, and they expect us to pick up their, their shortfall every year? As long as I've been on the board, it, I mean, Allison and I-
I totally agree.
It's gotta be close to a million dollars for the last five years. I'm voting no. I encourage people to vote no on this.
I totally agree with you, and I think we, we need to hear from Allison.
Well, hold on, I, I haven't finished. I, I, I think we should get our attorneys and Westchester Putnam School Board Association and the other school boards to file a class action suit against New York State. They, they lie to us.
But, you know, the-
Allison, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's a contractual obligation, right? They are contractually obligated to pay this. We enter in a contract with them and they just don't pay. If you have this in any other part of your life, you sue, right? It's $846,000 that they have not paid.
Still going to write that? Absolutely.
So, this is a, so this is a program that we pay for, right? This is a, this is reimbursable aid.
That's, that's right.
Right, so, i- it's not going to help to vote no because we, we have paid for these services and, and we will continue to pay for a special ed school.
But it's, well, first of all, it's a legal, it's a legal requirement that we have this program.
Right.
It's a legal, right, and which we would want to do anyway, but the idea is that they're supposed to pay. And it, it is just beyond the pale that people don't see this as a, a true breach of contract.
It's, it's a breach of their obligation, for sure.
I'm not yelling at, at John, I'm not, I'm not even, I'm not even gonna vote no because that doesn't really-
Right, and it creates more of a problem for us.
But I do believe that we should-
Because we paid for it, right.
I think that, that Warren is right and that there should be litigation around this. I think this is, if you, if this is just what they owe us and what they're writing off for us, every year they're writing off, what do you think, John?
Millions, I don't know.
Millions, right? Millions and millions of dollars of special ed services that they're not paying for.
Calculator.
It's, it's a breach of contract.
Seven, 740 districts in the state about, times $140,000 is, you know, what's that? $103 million.
I just don't feel like paying this.
It's $100 million.
That's what it comes down to. I just don't feel like paying this, I'm gonna write it off. Who else can do that? Seriously, I want to know who else can do that. This is bullying, this is state bullying of public school districts and on the backs of special ed kids that need summer services. It's unconscionable.
Well, it's not, it's not really-
I couldn't have said it any better.
Yeah.
It's not really on the backs because we did the services, so that they're getting the services, the special ed children.
So I think perhaps this is a topic that the school boards, board association and the superintendent's association-
Right, Westcott has to-
And, and my association probably we should all work on that.
We can advocate all we want for changing tenure and-
Right, we address this every year, the, it's addressed at the state level, the New York State School Boards Association addresses this, the Educational Conference Board, the superintendents' associations, all education.
What about the legislature?
You know, Jeffrey made a good point.
Lobby and address this.
Jeffrey made a good point where the, the, I know, you make a lot of good points, where the, the students that receive the services got them, which is right. However, if we have to write up $142 million, that means that comes out of other programs-
Thousand.
That our taxpayers have to pick up that our students don't get.
Right, money's fungible.
That's exactly right, for sure. I mean, it comes out of our budget, right.
$140,000, not million.
It doesn't come out of our budget, we're increasing the budget. This is one of the few things we're allowed to increase the budget for.
John, do you know if this is typical statewide across the country?
Yes, it is.
So it happens in every state across the country?
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, 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 just the state.
Just New York state.
Statewide.
He doesn't know, he doesn't know.
So, do you, does it happen in, in other states?
That I don't know.
No, states have different laws, yeah.
I, I thought you, you meant other states.
No, I'm sorry, does it happen nationally? Is this a national problem as opposed to New York state problem?
A lot of states fund the local education differently, so I wouldn't say so, but I wouldn't doubt it.
Education is a state, state function, and so every state has a different way of funding their educational system.
Well, education should be local, 16, 14.
It is.
16, 14.
They should be embarrassed.
I agree.
Okay.
But, we're gonna move on.
Yes.
But I agree.
We gotta vote.
We all agree. We do have to vote.
We're gonna take a roll call vote?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, well, all in favor of item 5.5, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Item 5.6.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I voted aye.
It was a nay.
Oh.
Warren's a nay.
All opposed?
I'm opposed to this. I think, I, I know, we're, sorry, I haven't had my chance to speak, okay?
You can speak again.
Oh, please, yeah, no, I, I didn't-
No, that's okay, no, it's fine.
Realized my policies for-
That's okay.
Making assumptions.
I was just gonna reiterate what I said, so it's okay.
Okay, all right.
Feels good, doesn't it?
Item 5.6.
I'm not, I'm not done tonight.
We'll keep going. May I have a motion to provide a 5.6, an agreement for health and welfare with the White Plains School District for 12 students?
I move 5.6.
Oh, thank you, Warren. I second. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve item 5.7, agreement for health and welfare, should have taken those together, with, with Katona for 16 students.
I move 5.7.
I second 5.7.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion on item 5.8 to approve building usage fees for the 2018, 19 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
No.
Yeah, what are we, why are we extending this? And I don't remember having a discussion about it.
We have to, we have to prove rates every year, every year, we just go to whatever we're contractually obligated in terms of costs to recoup our costs, there's one small change to it.
Right, that's my question, is why we're, we had a discussion about turf fees, that we were going to just like take a look at what it was and what the usage was, and now we're extending it, and I just want to know what that, why, I don't have any supporting documents.
The turf decision, discussion is ongoing, we actually had a meeting with all sorts of people. That, and the bottom line is what we agreed to last year was to go through a full year or a full season, depending on how you verbiage it, so that we will have to have a further discussion somewhere in July.
So, this rate doesn't, didn't set the rate for, for July going forward for, for the turf?
We did meet representatives in the school district, including Dr. Ackerman and Mr. Chow, and met with representatives from the town, including Rob Greenstein, Jill Shapiro, Ike, Jason was there. Everybody, I think, who should have been in the room was in the room, and it seems that we're working well together at this point, and that everybody agreed at that meeting, and it was very specific that, I think Christine or John, Edward John, made it very clear that at the end of the season, we would sit down again and figure out how we're going to do this so that the district doesn't end up paying for it at a pop.
That's true.
Thank you for doing that, Jeff.
I'd just like to add one thing about that, is that, and the point of the meeting, while it was to discuss costs, was to make it clear to everybody, and get them going on the same page, that this is about the youth of this community, and make sure that all the sports people that can would have some sort of access to our fields. And it's also going to change a little bit, hopefully, at the end of this summer, when the sea field comes online for turf.
So, yeah, I'd like to thank the administrators, members of the board, and the town for working together to work this out. So, all in favor of item 5.8, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion on item 5.9, to approve the appointment of election personnel for the May 15th school and library budget vote and election.
I move 5.9.
A second.
Holly, this is you.
All in favor, please say aye.
I have a discussion.
Oh.
So, I'm sorry. Good luck with your first vote, Lisa, this is going to be great, you have no problem, but I think, you know, we as a board should thank the, all the volunteers in town, because I know other towns have trouble getting volunteers, and we have the PTA and other members of the community who spend many, many hours in the gymnasium. I know, I think they give them coffee and donuts or something, but.
Very well said, very well said, yes, we want to thank the PTA and the League of Women Voters for both canvassing their membership and getting, getting volunteers. It's not an easy job, sometimes.
Holly, is there a debate this year? Is there a debate this year?
Canvas night?
Not publicly, at least.
I remember, I remember Allison's first uncontested election, she went to the League of Women Voters, and you shared your opinions and your vision for the school district, and I thought that was very well done, but if they're not, if they're not holding a forum, then there's nothing you can do.
We may do an online electronic guide, so that we can answer people that cheat, that polling, but if they have some questions, so if they're, we might not have that.
So, we hear, because you're not at the microphone, there may be an electronic guide going out to the community to perhaps answer questions, how would, how would people get the opportunity to send their questions?
No, it's a standard questionnaire.
Okay, to fill out a standard questionnaire about their candidacy and what they, what, you know, what their vision is, what their opinions are, et cetera.
Maybe we could have the library board candidate argue with the school board candidate about taping the, about taping the meetings.
There you go.
I'm putting out phone numbers now.
Okay.
Christine will moderate that.
Yes, that'd be great.
All in favor, all in favor of item 5.9, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve item 5.10, the agreement with Caitlin Franz as related to theater, stated in the agenda? I will move item 5.10, may I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Jeff, you have to say aye second.
I second.
Okay, any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and may I have a motion to approve the item 5.11, the agreement with KGND Architects for the design and implementation of the fitness center and dance studio?
I move item 5.11.
A second.
And I would like to thank Twin Oaks once again for such a generous offer and working on a great design for the fitness studio and work, and workout room, I think it's going to be truly wonderful, I think it's going to bring our entire gym area into the 21st century.
And I want to thank, the sports boosters deserve a big shout out here.
Oh, and the sports boosters were very involved as well, so thank you to the sports boosters for working on this, too.
So, just in terms of timeline, what I'm hoping is we'll have something ready for you at our next meeting, and then I'll present to the community the concept. So, I'm hoping we'll have the grant ready for your acceptance.
Okay.
And at the next meeting.
That's great. Okay, on facilities, I just want to, oh, we have to vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I would like to acknowledge receipt by the board of change orders as approved by the superintendent in items 6.1 through 6.5. Would the board like to comment?
Yes, I have a question regarding 6.2. Why are we paying for change order to remove an existing wall? Wouldn't you think they would know the existing wall was there when they bid the job?
Say that again.
I mean, I did renovations of my house, I got all sorts of change orders, they change ordered me from a green screw to a red screw, I don't know, but whatever. If you've got a construction company and doing a job, they want us to pay more money so they can take a wall down, well, when they spec the job out, wouldn't, wouldn't that wall have been there? And they knew they had to take the wall down?
I think you said the operable thing, whether or not that wall was in the specs, was it?
I think they, let me try to read, Christine, do we have to remove some walls because we went there to take a look?
This was in Seven Bridges?
Yes, this is Seven Bridges.
Yeah, it is.
Well, the thing is, we don't really have the details of this, it's $2,000.
I don't have the details of the design that required it.
The wall, the reason is because the design was changed a little bit.
So, the wall wasn't initially thought to come down?
Yeah, it was not going to come down.
We had to make some adjustments based on space issues when they were putting.
Okay, just wondering, you know, if you take a wall down, usually we'd know you're going to take a wall down.
Sometimes when you open up a wall, there's plumbing or electrical, maybe that they may have been done.
Just asking a question. I'm, you know.
Yeah, it was unanticipated.
I was already voting no on that one, too.
Let's tear the walls down.
No one acknowledging it?
Mr. Gorbachev.
I will acknowledge it.
I did not acknowledge that.
I acknowledged that you guys are doing the right thing.
I've been working long on his votes, and he's coming around.
All right. So, on the financials, I'd like to take the financials, may I have a motion to approve items 7.1 through 7.5? These would be the revenue status reports, appropriation status report, treasurers.
I move items seven.
And quarterly extra classroom activity accounts and team accounts.
I move item 7. etc., all inclusive, all item sevens, I move.
I will second, any questions on the financials? Any comments on these reports? No, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, notice of future meetings, our next meeting, our next gathering date will be at the Horace Greeley Gym for the vote. The board usually gathers there at the end of the night, we don't have a meeting, but we will be there. And then, the following meeting is on Wednesday, May 23rd, we will have our tenure teacher recognition. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move we adjourn the meeting at 21:06.
May I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
If I figure it out, yes. We do the math and I'll say yes.